Good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Town of Ryan Beck zoning board review meeting for January 17th, 2024. The first matter of business is review and approval of the proposed minutes from the September 20th meeting. They look fine to me, except there was one section that I should not be there, which is the section regarding the schedule for this year. I guess it was in the November meetings, so that was the only change I had. Anybody have any other changes, corrections, concerns? Okay, I make a motion that we accept the meeting minutes as presented, subject to that correction, which Gretchen and I have already talked about. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Opposed? All right, so let's carry. And our first order of business, we have three matters on. And the first application is Shawna Berry.
Hi.
Hi.
Don't come up.
You do, come on up. The way this works is that you come on up and you are on TV.
I'm on the way.
So try to behave.
I'm on the way.
As if you can speak into the...
That's my house.
Yeah. And by the way, thank you for the renderings.
Thank you. Those look nice.
They do look nice. And usually, we're not so lucky. And so when I saw that, I was like, wow, finally, people are listening.
I appreciate that.
So what you do is just go through the application. We have it here.
Okay.
Tell us generally what you want to do. If we think we have enough to accept it, we will, and put you on for a public hearing, which will be February 21st.
Okay.
February 21st.
So. Okay, so basically, oh no, this is so great. So we are asking for a pool. It's 14 by 30, small, not with diving boards, very basic to go with the house. But it's three variances because our yard is not our property, so we can't do a lot. Our lawn is not our property, it's our neighbors. So it's not, there's very limited space, we have five and a half acres. But it's all woods, so the pool is going on the only spot that is flat, that's actually on our property. Thank you for doing that. That's on the side of our house. It's the only actual available land that's our property, because our lawn goes into our neighbors. We're very nice and know about the pool, so they're excited to use it. So it's three variances. One is just because it's six inches short.
No, hold on one second.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Nope, I'm just gonna, I'm getting the...
Oh, thank you. So it's three variances. One's just literally for six inches to the road. You can't see it from the road. Like, our house is a little hill in front of the house. Some of you are over last year to our house. So it's very modern, so we're trying to have the pools fit with the house. It's not body, you barely, you won't be able to see it from the road anyway. But the fence is in the rendering included, because that would be the fence, we already found the company, so that's from the company. So like, I want it to be as accurate as possible. So it's actually just a style of fence, that will line, if that's okay. It'll match the color of the house, which I think is, will be adorable. But I'll take opinions on adorable or not. So it's just three variances. One plus six inches, one is from the front of the road. I'm not architect, I'm a social worker, so I'm gonna go probably as a super accurate for tonight. But one is six inches from the road. There's three angles that we had the surveyor point out. One's 31 feet, and one, I'm trying to reference Brian's letter that he wrote. Three variances. One is, it comes up to the front of the house a little bit. I guess it's in front of the house. So one is because it technically comes up into the front of the house. And then two other variances, one is six inches and one for 31 feet. So that's what I'm asking and applying for tonight. Yeah, I'll take all questions, comments, and excitement.
Because of the renderings that were provided just for the...
Yeah.
Yes, that's the actual pool, like, from the company of the pool that we, so that's the actual pool. So we're not paying anything else, like, not a big, this will actually be what it'll look like. So the fence is accurate in terms of where it's going. There's three renderings that I put in there, so you can hopefully see the fence, like, it's going to the back. So this is what it will look like. There's no big, there's no splash, there's no thing in the pool. It'll just be like this. So that's my... Yeah, it's the only spot in our yard that is flat, it's on our property. That's not where the well is, the well is in the back. But we had people walk around to make sure it made sense, and there was no issues with drainage and stuff. Yeah, it's big property, there's just no other land to, another place to put the pool on. And it's not a big pool, it's a decently sized, a small pool. Yeah.
Okay, well, it's a pretty complete application. Again, thank you very much for the renderings. That is usually what is allowed. And you've been through the process before.
Yes, I did last year.
What else can I help answer?
Yes, my dog can swim.
Questions?
Don't worry, he can swim.
Questions, concerns?
I have a question. So as you mentioned, one of the variants that's required is that, so because, even though the pool is on the side of the house, if it's fronting the side, if it's close to the fronting street, that's what's being prompted, this area variance. And because it's on a curb, so here's the pool, here's the house, so the pool is closer to the fronting street. One thing that we usually like to ask is to understand exactly what the distance is. So I know that you had a few measurements, but could you confirm, and I have the large scale, so I might be able to do it myself. But if you could confirm the measurement from the principal house, your main house, to the road, and then what the principle, what the measurement is from the pool to the road? I think, oh, I think that's in there, I can't point.
The pool is 149, which is why we have to have that. It's supposed to be 150, the regulation for the town.
Yeah, no, well, yeah. Oh, yeah, 149.
But you're saying also from the house to the road?
Yeah, so that's why there's two variants, two variances are based on the front yard.
Okay.
Because the way that the zoning law is worded is that the accessory structure shall not project closer to the fronting street or be located in the required front yard. So that's why it's kind of, it's like two. One is because it's not the 150, and then one is because it's closer in general.
Okay, to the road than the house.
Right, so if you could just confirm what the measurement is from the principal house to the, to the mill road, that would be helpful.
Okay. Should I have them draw that on here or not?
You don't have, if you could just tell us what it is, that would be...
Just give us the measurement, that's fine.
Yeah.
I'm a social worker, I can't do math.
Because it doesn't look like, I see like this, like, one, unless it's this two, like, one is...
It's 149 plus 12 from the porch.
Plus 12.
Oh, it's the house, 23, so 23 plus 149.
Oh, where do you, oh, I see.
23.4 from the house to the edge of the pool, and then 149 from the other edge of the pool. So it's actually 23 plus 149 plus 14.
Plus 14. And where, can you, here's the, here's the...
Oh, yes.
Can you just point, show me what number you're looking at? It's a little, there's a little button at the top.
Okay, so...
And just hold it down.
This is 23, so...
23, that's from the pool to the...
Correct.
Okay.
23.4 is from where my, actually, at the moment, that's the edge of the house. So it's not from the porch, right there.
Okay.
The edge plus one is 23.4. Then this is 16, and then the road from the road you want is either plus 161 or plus 149. Does that make sense?
Yes.
Plus the 16th in the pool.
16. Okay.
Yeah, 16 plus 23, plus either 160 or plus 149.
Is it 14 or 16 for the pool? 14, right?
Oh, 16, it's 14, but there's a 14.
So you want 161 plus 14 and then plus 14?
23.4.
Perfect. Yeah.
So why do you have to point it out? Can you just point out where the fence is going to go?
Oh, yeah.
This shit? Even here?
Oh, yeah, so this is, sorry, it's marker, this is the fence. I hadn't put it in on the actual flat that you measured out. So again, what I tried to do is actually make it like as real as possible. So this is where it's actually going to go around the pool.
Okay.
And up to the, to the porch. And there's three gates that are happening to, like, regular, you know, I get six feet, the regulation size, one, two, three. Yeah.
Great.
And you can have it staked out at some point when we come out.
It's staked out now. Come over tomorrow.
We usually need a lot of public hearing, so...
But yeah, it's staked out. Yeah.
Are you putting in the fence because it is required?
Yeah.
But, I mean, if it wasn't required, would you put the fence in?
Probably not, because we don't have kids in the fences. It's like, it doesn't go with the house as much. It just needs to have landscape. We don't have kids or anything. But yeah, it's required, so, I mean, unless you're telling me I don't have to, it saves us money.
No, no, no.
Okay. So yes, fence is happening.
Okay, and other questions? All right, I think that there's certainly enough information for us to accept the application. Does anybody have any different feelings?
It looks good.
All right, so I will make a motion that we accept the application. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. Are you opposed? All right, can you be here on February 21st, 2024?
Yeah.
Okay, so, well, I'm scheduled for a public hearing on that date. This will be informed of what you want to do.
Yeah.
And you can come in. You've been through the process before, they can come in and ask you questions or have your voice, their opinion, yea or nay, whatever.
Yeah.
Okay, so anyway, we'll see you on the 21st.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Okay, so we have some housekeeping to do, I'm trying to find the sheets, sheet down here.
So this for seekers?
Yeah.
Probably do it as a type 2 for 617.5 C12, which is the construction expansion placements of minor accessory residential structures, including living pools.
Yes, that sounds right. Okay, then I make a motion that we deem this to be a type 2, action number 617.5 C12. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, and you do have referrals to the planning board and also the WOC.
Yep, because it's just located within the LWRP area.
And who would like to volunteer to be the point contact person? Mike?
I mean, yeah, I got Riss out, and I'll do that one too, sure.
Oh, you do?
Yeah.
All right, don't fight over whoever wants to do it.
Oh, you want it? Have you done one? You haven't done one yet?
I haven't done one yet. Very scary to do it.
Yeah, you have need, which is another pool one, so you will be the pool guy.
Oh, you'll be the pool guy.
Yeah, the sun guy last night.
Excellent, you're two all special, so you're the pool guy.
Yeah, okay.
All right. Of course it is to be. All right, so Brian, I'll be on that. Anything else, Kim?
No, I think, I think that's it.
That's it, all right. So that's number one. The second one is also kind of a retread, and that's Marie Laridi Chandwan. And is there somebody here for that? Okay, two people here for that.
So good evening, Mark Remenski here, representing Primrose Hill LLC. And for, actually, application both to this board, to the zoning board of the field, and also to the planning board. This application, and I believe was here last year, I can remember.
It was, yes.
With regard to placement of, construction of a pool in the front yard of the principal residence. And so, so first, properties located on the South Lee side of Primrose Hill Road. Total parcel size is... It's about a little more than 11 acres, it's 11.14 acres. Access, access to the main residence is by an existing driveway right here on the south side of Primrose Hill Road. Here's the existing primary residence right here. And there are multiple accessory structures located on the property. There's a greenhouse located here, there's an existing shed that's here, and it's actually slated to be relocated here. From, going from here to here. This, if you recall from the previous application, so this was an existing detached garage. And so this proposal is to repurpose this garage for a pool house. So that's, that's going to be located right here. And then associated with the repurposing of this building for a pool house, there's going to be a small addition off of the southwest corner, which is right here.
I'm trying to zoom in further.
Which is, which is right there. The reason for that is to actually have sanitary facilities for, for the pool house. So we did bathroom here. And then it will also, which will lead to construction of a new sanitary system for this accessory structure. For this, this, this new, I guess it's repurposed, I said repurposed accessory structure is now going to be, you know, a pool house, but it's also going to be treated as a habitable space, and it'll be a one-bedroom accessory structure. And so as I said before, it'll be, this, this addition to the, off the southwest corner is for a bathroom, and it leads to proposed new sanitary facilities here. Water supply will be from the existing residence. There's an existing water service that goes to here, that'll just be connected into this building. On the majority of the property is wooded, there's woods all along through here. This is, this right here is the delineation of the New York State D E C wetland, it's K E 15. This is the 100-foot adjacent area associated with that. So, and then also, just back to this accessory structure. In addition to that, there is going to be a covered space right here. There's, there's going to be a slab right there for the pool equipment, and it'll be unslabbed and covered. And so the original application that was made to this board did not, did not include this. And so we recently just added this small space here, it's an additional 42 square feet, that is added to the aggregate for all the accessory structures on the property. And then, just finally, as part of this application, due to the location of the proposed new sanitary facility, you know, a construction road is going to be needed to be placed in this location in order to construct the septic system and bring in some fill that's associated with it, and probably be used for renovation and construction of this structure. And so, as I said before, so its application is both to this board and to the planning board for, planning board for site plan, site plan special permit application. So last, no, actually, it was on Tuesday, we had pre-application meeting of the planning board, and so we'll be preparing materials for submission to the planning board through their application. We're here now to, you know, discuss the, the items that require consideration by this board for area variances. And so obviously, one is that, you know, we're adding to this accessory structure. So once again, as, as was true with the, with the pool, it's in front of the principal residence, right? So this structure is closer to the South Lee road, road line of Primrose Hill Road. And so an area variance under section 1.527 is required for this accessory structure closer to the front line of the principal residence.
Mark, do you have exact numbers?
Yeah, just gonna say, just as we discussed with the last opening, can you just point out what those numbers are?
So this, this number is 140.6 feet, and then this distance right here, this distance here to the principal residence is 220.2 feet. Second area variance is 12527A4. Aggregate of 1,500 square feet is allowed for accessory structures. 23, 26 square feet is proposed. Area variance for 866 square feet is requested. So that is per the original application that was made to this board. And then as of Tuesday, we found, we had it, we had to add 20, or excuse me, 42 square feet to that number. And certainly then the application, okay, to reflect that. Third is area variance from section 12527A7. Three accessory structures are allowed in this zoning district. This parcel contains four accessory structures, required application to planning board and, and actually to this board also.
I don't think it's to this board. It should just be to, it should just be a special, because it's over, so if it's over 10 feet, 10 acres, they, you don't need an area variance, you just need a special use permit to the planning board. So I don't think that's an area variance.
Just to the planning board.
Just to the planning board.
And then finally, area variance from section 12568E4. Our C5 zoning district allows 900 square feet of habitable space. The pool house is an accessory dwelling unit, structured with a total of 1,266 square feet. Area variance for 366 square feet is requested. Once again, so that additional 42 square feet is not habitable. It's outside, and it's merely, by definition, it's, by definition, it's part of the accessory structure because it's rude, and it's attached to the building.
Did the pool go in?
And hope the pool exists.
Yeah, I know we were out there last, Catherine, I was out there last year, so we're talking pool.
There's a rock ledge, and yeah.
And so we're in the process of finalizing, you know, finalizing plans for application to the planning board, you know, which, which includes, you know, final design of this sanitary system and moving forward the planning board, and also application to the Duchess County Department of Health, and then finalizing approval of this entrance from the Duchess County Department of Public Works. Pardon me, is that permit or temporary, that access road? So this access road right now is, is for construction, so it's, it's, it's up for, you know, discussion with DPW. At this time, it's just a temporary construction road.
Their plan, Mark, is to try and have that be permanent?
I'm sorry to interrupt.
Their desire is to have that road be permanent?
No, it would be for, it may be, right now, it's for temporary construction. It may need, you know, need to have further discussion with DPW. It may be required, you know, for, you know, for maintenance, but right now, it's just for construction. If there is a change, it's certainly let this board know.
And I'll just, you provided some renderings. So the first, these ones were submitted with the first application, is that an old rendering, or?
Mike, do you want to speak to those?
We have the newer ones too, I just didn't know if this was part of the...
This is more of a current one, actually, that's okay, because originally, they weren't sure which way we were going to go, but once the pool was done, the topography, the bedrock, and everything like that, it lends itself just to be more natural, even though we're going closer to the road, it just lends itself naturally. And upon moving the shed, which was an ideal request last year when we were here, to get that farther back in the property, the owners were more than willing to entertain that, so, and removing that...
So this is what, this is what the pool currently looks like?
Yes.
But the structure is not changing?
That's correct. Well, it's not changing the location, it will, the full door, where that window is there.
Okay.
Upon, you know, the bricks that were on file already, so...
So Kim, if you could just look back at the site plan?
Sure.
So that area is shown right here. So here's the pool, here's the patio around the pool. Here's, here's that, there's a step there that's shown in that rendering. And there's the, you know, like, harder place, it's the grill area, right there. And then once again, you know, in that rendering, so there's landscaping in here now, and so this shed gets relocated to there.
Which radically dropped off on the property, the top of the process, if you're wanting to see that in the street cover.
Now, what is shown is previously, that, that's not there at this point in time, I mean...
The color shading on the right, we did two different colors on that, just to differentiate, but that would be the new roof line, with that small addition.
But as far as the pool goes, it's just the pool itself, so...
That's the pool, the, the hard skate, the end of it, yeah. Fence in Gotham, yeah.
Right, and so there's the addition right there, there's the existing structure, here's the addition.
The door you were talking about, you were... And is this gonna be, what's it, is that gonna be the color, the living color?
No, no, that's just strictly for the type of door that they want to hold on the right hand.
Oh, so that's just supposed to be...
It's gonna stay like green?
The door itself will probably be...
No, no.
The building's still gonna be green, yes, yes.
The same color as the house?
Yes. Yes, yep. Yeah, they want cotton, yeah.
And this looks like it uses the...
Yeah, that's, that's right now.
That says it's right now, yeah.
And so, and so there is a split rail fence around, around the pool, and that's shown on the second one.
And that, that's, this is the old one?
That's the old one.
The old site.
Yeah, that's, yeah, February 2024.
Questions, concerns? I know property laws, so it's a catalyst to, we both want to...
She will not put it in.
I think it's a tool list. It's a legal... All right, I don't have any questions.
I have one question, just because when you were going, you were going over the, the numbers, I thought it was, I thought the application showed something different, I just wanted to verify. So you said, so if you look at number two, that's the one for the aggregate of 1,500 square feet, and it has it here with the 2366, but you said we should add 42 to this one?
So, yes, we add 42 because the, the slab with the roof, with the pool equipment, which is rude, is now included.
Okay, because it looked like it was added, so then the number four, that's, it should be the old one.
No, we already have amended that.
Okay, sure. Would you mind just, just to update it? Perfect, okay. So then that one should be, what's it, 12, that 66 or something, or the...
Yeah, it's, the old number was 1266, and then 42.
And then, so the, it would be 366?
Correct.
No, we're not adding 42 for the fourth variant? You may not really...
Yeah, yeah, exactly. But not adding that, because, because it's not part of this space.
Gotcha, okay, thank you.
Questions, concerns? Okay, I think there's enough here to certainly accept the application, so I make a motion that we accept the application. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right, Mark, can you be here, or?
Yes.
You want to be here till February, absolutely, for that. And then you'll clean up the applications to make...
Yes, I will, yeah, immediately, because we're finalizing application to the Health Department, the Town, Planning Board, and then everything will follow to this pool concern.
Great, thank you, thank you. All right, so Kim indicated that, basically, we're gonna let the planning board deal with the secret issue?
Yes, so Mark, you said it's gonna be, it's in front of the planning board?
Yes, yes.
Yeah, my recommendation is that if it's gonna be concurrent with the planning board, we should let the planning board be the main agency.
I like your recommendation. We'll go back. All right, and the referrals just to the town, planning board?
Just the planning board, yeah.
Yeah, I have it right here. All right, and... Do you have a tip on Brian?
I just still have a pool problem.
Well, who did the last resolution this morning?
Uh, for Rudy?
No, 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 for this, but.
Oh, oh, you know what, hold on, oh, I think you did, Scott.
Did I? No, I have a question to ask.
I know.
Ever ask a question?
I tried, I tried to look at the resolution, and I, it wasn't.
It was either Catherine or I, I think, that did the resolution, so, I'll take it. Just to keep the time moving.
Okay.
I'll, I can verify that.
Okay.
I couldn't find a copy of it, but I'm sure it's somewhere.
Yeah, I'd like to have a copy of it, just to see what was in there.
Sure, yeah.
Okay, anything else? Okay. The third and last new application we have is Wireless Edge, is there anybody here for that? Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, so I think you saw how we roll here, that's basically just to take through the application, generally, what you're looking for, and, and we'll decide whether there's enough here to accept the application, so. And we'll give you some questions, Brian, too.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman and members of the board, Robert Cordiasso with the law firm of Snyder and Snyder. On behalf of Verizon Wireless and Wireless Edge, I'm joined by the owner of Wireless Edge, Mr. John Arthur.
Good evening.
So, just by way of background, Wireless Edge and Verizon Wireless filed an application called Chang property, General and 9G, for 155-foot wireless telecommunications facility designed to resemble a tree. We've been through the public hearing process, which is ongoing with the planning board, which requires a special permit and site plan approval. And during that process and the evaluation of alternatives, the planning board actually voted in a straw poll overwhelmingly to recommend relocation facility to this property, which we call the groupies property. The interesting thing about this property is that the town board a few years back actually changed the code to make this property a permitted location pursuant to special permit and site plan approval. So we spent some time, and we went and looked at this property, and the good news is, we were able to obtain a lease. We were able to confirm with Verizon Wireless that the site actually works from an RF standpoint, even though it's much lower in elevation. Property is much larger, location of facility is pushed back from the road much further. It meets all of the setback requirements, it meets the setback requirements of the property line, to structures, and to residences. So the only thing that it requires, and which is before your board, is a height variance. So the code, the code is long, and it has a number of different provisions. One provision is that fully camouflaged towers cannot exceed 70 feet. So what this is, it's a brown monopole, and that's something that the planning board favored, rather than having a fake tree, so to speak. Another thing in your code, it says if it's not fully camouflaged, you go by the underlying height requirement, which in this case is 35 feet. And then there's another code provision that says that the height is limited to 10 feet above the average tree line. Within 300 feet of the facility, the average tree line is approximately 80 feet. So the building inspector's determination was that 90 feet is permitted, and we need a height variance for the 200-foot tower. So just to tell you a little bit about the facility, again, it's pushed back from property, underground utilities, extension of the existing access drive, which would be gravel. There's a compound for the Verizon Wireless equipment. The compound's also designed for future colocation. Required by your code, smart planning, avoid the proliferation of future towers, build this facility, not only the tower, but also the base for the other carriers that invariably will need to cultivate here. The towers proposed to be 200 feet, which would handle both Verizon Wireless and the other wireless carriers in the area. So we've submitted a lot of documentation, the full site plan. We submitted a radio frequency engineering report showing why the sites need, I think if you're driving the area, if you're business in the area, if you're in the standard need for the site, but we submitted all the background data on that. We submitted a report showing the site's completely safe, that it meets federal requirements for radio frequency exposure. We submitted various certifications requiring by the code, we submitted a structural certification, full environmental assessment report, including an archaeological Phase 1 and Phase, Phase 1A and Phase 1B archaeological report. So all of that's in the package. The one thing that we haven't submitted yet are the visual renderings, which I wanted to inform you, I think we previously informed the town. We're going to actually put crane on the property next Monday, for approximately 9:00 or 9:30 in the morning, to approximately 12:00, 12:30 in the afternoon. And what we'll do is, what we submitted to you is a report saying, we're gonna take photographs from all these areas, and then we'll do visual renders to show you exactly what the facility will look like. We think the visibility will be minimal, based on our last report on the other site. The site's a little bit taller, but I think it's a lower ground elevation and push back more on the property.
How far back is it on the property?
So it's over 8, it's well over 800 feet.
So you're never gonna see it from the road, or?
No, we won't see the base, you know, you might get a glimpse of the tower in different areas, but that'll be the top of the tower. We're not proposing, with the planning board, just for a twist of bottom brush, of a fake tree. So we think this is a cleaner application, proposing to paint it a dark brown, better blend with the background. So that will show in the visual renderings, which we'll have done by the end of the month. But we're gonna do the crane test next Monday, if you'd like to go out and see that. Obviously, you're welcome, if you wanna have a site visit any other time. John is here in town, his office is right, right down the block. So just, you know, if Gretchen let us know if you wanna go out individually, if you wanna go out collectively, let us know, we'll arrange it with John.
Yeah, we typically go out after the public hearing, because we like to hear the concerns of children, or whatever.
Sure.
Before we go out there, so that's typically what we.
But if any time you wanna go out, even before or after, just let us know, and John's right here in town, so. So that's some substance of the application. It is a wireless telecommunications facility, is regulated by federal law. We laid out a lot of the different background information in our memo, and I think it's all pretty straightforward. But we also do need site plan, a special permit from the planning board. We're back in front of them on February 20.
I, I think it's a better location myself, and I really do, I think, it's a better, I'm not a Christmas tree painter, I don't know if you'd call it, but I think it makes a lot of sense, you know, where it is, versus the first.
It's highly unusual for an applicant to change locations and get a new lease and file a whole separate application. John, he would at least have it on his head to be able to get that done, and we think it's a great application, too. Yep.
Could you, uh?
Yeah.
Initially, you went for, you were coming for 150 foot?
So the original location, which is.
Monopole, and then you changed it to 200.
The original location, which is Chang property?
Oh, which was a different.
Totally different property, much higher ground elevation, 155 feet.
Right.
We're way down ground elevation, right, 200 feet. We do not need lighting, we submitted a report showing that, which was originally a concern, but we need that 200-foot limit.
This is going on the new roof.
Correct.
Yeah. That, you mean back where the old stand?
Yeah, yeah.
Back in there?
Yep.
Does this mean I get more than two bars now with my Verizon service?
That doesn't land.
Actually, I was gonna ask Mr. Cordiasso, could you go over the RF?
Sure, so, we did an original report that we submitted, and then we did a supplemental report. We revised it to include this site. It's from Verizon Wireless's engineers directly. Talks about two things, one is, well, you just mentioned, a number of bars, that's coverage. So Verizon has a number of different frequency ranges, some go a little further, some go less far.
Yes, and I think I have.
Some, some when they, when they go less far, they have more bandwidth, meaning they can handle more capacity. Some when they go further, it has less bandwidth, so it's all a balance. There's two problems in the area, one is that there's not enough coverage, there's just simply not enough signal level in the area. The second problem is, is the surrounding sites not only can't reach into this part of Ryanback, they don't have the capacity to cover that big of an area, so they're, they're causing, they're having capacity problems on the surrounding sites. So what we did is, we showed both the coverage plots, and we showed at various different heights, and we showed why 200 feet is necessary. So what this is really showing is, this is called the best server plot, this is not where the coverage is. But this is showing you, if I may use the pen?
Yes.
What this is showing you is that, they're just oriented, 189, 9G, Route 9. They have a site down here, and they have a site up here, and they're covering really large areas. And what they're not able to do is really provide coverage of this area from here, right? And they're missing, and they're missing an area here. Again, what this, all this is showing is that, these are the sites that are trying to cover in here. What we do later, we scroll through the maps, we show, we show the capacity data for those surrounding sites, showing that they're over capacity, they just can't handle the amount of usage. So again, this is, this is if we put a site at the original location, and you can see where we're trying to cover. These, again, these aren't coverage maps, you can scroll, scroll a little bit back, I think more relevant maps, okay. So this is the actual coverage. So what this is showing is, the green is the strongest signal strength, the yellow's the weaker signal strength. But you can see where the problem is, I mean, it's, it's all through here, again, you know, you know where Topson is, you know where we go into the bridge, you know where the problems are, just from driving through the area. And this is at, this is at the stronger signal range, 700 goes further than some of the other bands that, that they use. We'll scroll through again, please. So again, this was the original location, and you see, at 140, which is a 150-foot tower, it covers pretty well. One place it doesn't cover, that was really in through here, through Route 9, if I can scroll forward. So what we did as part of this process, scroll forward, this map is more of a technical map, I don't think it really helps, again, scroll forward, please. Okay, so this is the, this is the, this is the higher bandwidth, it doesn't go as far, but it provides more capacity. So again, you can see that this is where the problem area is, scroll forward. This is the original coverage from the original site. Again, it covers very well on 9G and 189, not as well on Route 9.
Is there a 5G component with this?
So this is, this is all designed for 4G, which is being built, but eventually, you know, in the quote, what is 5G really? 5G is faster, because it needs greater bandwidth, lower latency. They will use the same equipment, they'll add frequencies, and they'll be able to provide additional services, but it's, they still need this type of, okay, so this is the alternative location, scroll forward. So here you go, the better covering bandwidth, the new location at, at the 200-foot level, and now look what happens. We're getting, we're getting this area here. It's lowering ground elevation, the original site was about here, lowering ground elevation, it's further in this direction, but at the higher height, we're able to get, we're able to get that, those three locations there, those three rooms. And obviously, all the surrounding area, scroll forward. This is the, I'm sorry, this, this is actually, this is actually, again, you see, the Route 9, 9G, 189. 189 is not as strong, but we're still getting coverage in there, and more importantly, we're picking this up, scroll forward. Scroll forward, this is the technical map. This is that, that different, that other bandwidth, the higher bandwidth, it doesn't cover as far, but again, see, it covers, covers pretty well. Go forward. And then this is the, this is the height justification, so when you, when you start looking at the lower heights, if you go forward, so these are the existing, the existing problem areas. And this is when you go down in height to 156, for example, starts to open up barriers, and this is where it really starts to open up, along Route 9. So we're kind of defeating, defeating the purpose of only the alternative location of those lower heights, plus it wouldn't be able to serve the population. And again, as you start going lower in height, it starts opening up these gap areas anymore.
You're right, it's.
And then by the time you get down here, you're not really providing the coverage you need. Scroll forward. I think that's, we're down 156, so. So that's, that's the technical summary from a coverage standpoint, to your point. We were somewhat surprised at the lower ground elevation, and much further out of where they were trying to cover that this site would work, but Verizon searched it hard, and they came back, and it works.
Questions, concerns? Okay, you certainly have enough information, and thank you very much for your presentation, and I'll make the motion that we accept the application, do I have a second? Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Can you be here for February 21st?
Yes.
So we'll see you then, and we may have an audience, we may not. We'll see, but thank you for the presentation.
Thank you, it'd be a time to say. The only question I have, what are we doing on secret, are we doing a coordinator review on this one?
Yeah, it will be a coordinator review.
Oh, coordinator.
No, we will, we will, we'll work with the planning board.
Okay, so will you consent to the planning board, we'll see, is that the plan?
Yes.
Okay, that's fine.
And could you tell us where, where you are with the planning board?
So we, we filed the application the same day we filed this, we had the pre-con meeting on January 2nd. We discussed it formally with them last night, and we're in front of them for December 20th, for the acceptance and scheduling. February 20th for the acceptance, and hopefully schedule a public hearing, or at least in March 18th.
And you're, you're still moving forward, setting things into Chang?
So we're moving, what we did is, we just adjourned the Chang application, it's still a pending public hearing, but we haven't filed here for the, for the height variance, because we're pushing this one.
Okay, so, so your, your height variance is just for the communities?
Correct.
Okay.
Will you send a notice to the planning board that this board consented to the lead agency, is that?
Yeah, yeah, they'll probably send us a little letter or something, we, Gretchen will.
Okay, there's no problem with that, okay.
No, we've done all the time.
Great.
So with the height variance, you had given us, I didn't see a, a letter, I didn't know Brian Tam did a determination letter. So what's, what is his, is he going off the 90 or the?
He's going off the 90, so if you wanna look at that, we don't disagree with him. We're kind of deferring to the town to, you know, to determine whether the 35.
Yeah, it was kind of as an odd.
It's an odd.
Way of wording it.
Yeah, it's a little oddly worded, so I'm not 100% sure which one applies, I think.
Okay.
I think it would be safer to go after the 35, maybe we wanna notice it that way. But it is what it is at the end.
The height's gonna be the.
The height's the height, so it's, yeah. So whether it's 90 or 35, it shouldn't matter how we vote, it's concerned with it. Thank you very much, we'll see you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, and has, has been a little too, the planning board, you think, lead on this, as far as secret?
Yeah, I think that's, that would be part of the recommendation, I think.
Except for our recommendation. And then we have referrals to the planning board, who are there, we have, which is kind of explaining, and WAC.
Yep, just like Rudy.
Yes.
So just, just so that, I have this in my grid, but just as an explanation, so with telecommunications towers, they are what's considered a public utility, so they actually go with a, there's a policy from the state that everyone usually uses cell phones, and that there's a public need for having cellphone towers. So the purpose is that they have a reduced standard for variances. So instead of doing the general balancing, the benefit, I guess, detriment to the community, and then the five-factor test, the, the test is to consider if there's gaps in the service, if the proposed tower will remedy those gaps, and does the facility present a minimal intrusion to the community? So as we're going through this application, that's what you should, those are like the three questions you should kind of be focusing on, as opposed to your standard five of, you know, if it's undesirable characteristic in the community, substantiality, physical, environmental constraints.
Okay, and do you, will you determine whether we go off Brian's 90 or whether it's the 35, is it?
I'll look into it. My, my recommend, when I read the code, because I wouldn't consider this to be a camouflaged pole, because it's not meant to be with the trees and stuff, I would consider the 35 to be the better starting point.
Well, safer for sure, but of course, it's a lesser variance to be at, start at 90, so.
Yes, I'll, I'll take a look, I'll talk to Brian about it.
Either's fine, Mike, not by me.
But, yeah, the way, so the way that the code is written, it says here, "Communication towers or attachments thereto should be no higher than 10 feet above the average height of the existing tree canopy or buildings within 300 feet of the proposed facility. However, the height of a communication tower or attachment shall not exceed the height limits of the zoning district in which the facility is proposed to be located unless the facility is completely camouflaged." So, again, I wouldn't consider a monopole to be camouflaged, so that's why, and going off the area, area and bulk regulations, it's moving 35.
Yeah.
And the, the planning board did not, was not in favor of a camouflaged tree or pole, is that right?
Yes.
I think that's right, and also the prior location, I think, was problematic.
Yeah, I think.
The prior location?
Yeah, the prior proposed location.
It's the Chang property?
Farther, farther, I guess, north.
Further, farther, I guess, north.
Yeah, Richard, if you want, I can send you what the visual assessments looked like with the tree. It didn't look, there really wasn't a lot of trees around, so it kind of looked.
Oh, oh, there were not a lot of trees.
There weren't a lot of trees immediately around the facility, so it just kind of looked out, please.
Yep, correct.
Yeah.
But I can send that to you, just so you can kind of see what was proposed originally. And then that might be a good comparison to.
Well, especially given the new site and how far back it is and the fact that it's going to be camouflaged.
Yeah, and it might be nice, you know, to keep, keep the balloon test in mind. Um, it might be, they'll, they'll be.
Keep the what test in mind?
The balloon test, that's the crane that they're talking about. Where they put like a little, um, I think they said they were going to put a balloon on, so you should be able to see it.
But this is on Monday, right?
It's on Monday. They'll provide pictures, but it's just, you know, when they're going to do it. So it's January twenty-second from around nine AM to twelve. And they're doing it in leaf-off condition, which is ideally the best time to do it. So then you can really see what it's going to look like at, at the post-opening period.
All right, anything else?
Well, you guys did a good job of this, I guess. Referral, referral.
Yeah.
And, yeah, I guess, um, point contact person.
Catherine.
Catherine.
Okay, that does it for the new applications. So we're getting into the public hearing. And the first matter that's on is Dave's Tree Service. Okay, so Kim, you want me to make a motion to open the public hearing?
Thank you.
You're welcome. Do I have a second?
Please.
All in favor? Aye. All right, the, uh, public hearing is over. Is anybody here for the, um, Dave's Tree Service matter? Okay, just figured I had. All right.
Good evening, Mark Formanski, representing Dave Hughes at Dave's Tree Service. So this is an application for area variance, the location of a proposed sign, to be located on the, I guess, the south westerly side of Route nine G. Dave's Tree Service has, you know, recently, in the last couple of years, built a new facility, um, located on Route nine G in the town of Rhinebeck. So access is off of nine G, facility is located right here on the property. Obtained in, uh, two thousand twenty-one and two thousand twenty-two, SecPlan's approval from the town of Rhinebeck Planning Board for, um, construction of the facility. And also in, um, two thousand twenty-two, had obtained approval from the Planning Board for a location of a, of a sign, uh, located near, uh, Route nine G on the property. And at the time, that sign is going to be, met all the criteria that the zoning code, town of Rhinebeck zoning code has for the proposed signage. This particular application is for a setback. It's, it's requesting an area variance, your setback from the right-of-way line of, um, of New York State Route nine G. The town of Rhinebeck code requires twenty feet. Seven feet is what is being proposed for this application. And the, um, the sign provided, um, you know, the previous meeting provided a detail of the sign. All the, um, dimensions of the sign meet the code. The only area variance being requested is for the setback from Route nine G. The reason for, the request for this, this setback is basically for visibility. And that's why it provided this aerial overlay in this section of the application. You can see that it's actually not only vegetation located here, there's actually a topography also impacts, um, visibility of the sign. So it needs to be located further, um, in, in the north, northwest, um, towards, towards nine G right-of-way for visibility. In addition to, in addition to that, and so you can only, like, based on, uh, the existing, uh, topography of the road and, and, um, existing vegetation, it's not till here that you actually get to start to see the sign. And so, um, also, there are some other constraints in this area that limit the, the actual location of the sign, both in a north and south direction. Um, there's, there's drainage that is located on this, on this side. Drainage enters, enters through here and discharges, uh, down to the south, um, you know, through existing swales along the state right-of-way. So the, the location on the, uh, south side of the entrance is not feasible at all. And, and needing a twenty-foot setback requirement, both would be from two, two boundary lines. The existing west, north westerly boundary line of nine G and also the southern boundary of the, of the parcel, of the entire parcel boundary. So that was the reason for choosing this location. And, um, so also two through, um, you know, photographs had provided that there's, there's actually drainage improvements that are located here to pick up stormwater coming through here and also down nine G and, and into, into drainage structure here and underneath, going underneath the existing accessway to Dave's Tree Service and then further to the south. And there's also a utility pole that's located right there. It says, "Service for Dave's, um, property pole right there. It's overhead service and then it's underground from here." So the sign's located, and there's a small knob right there. There's a small, there's a small hill that's located right here with drainage going in both sides. So the sign's located right there. It's basically the only spot that's really visible. Topography goes up, up this way and it's not feasible to be located here. So the, uh, the basis in, in requesting this variance is, is, you know, once again, just to have it at this location, you know, for continued visibility. At the previous meeting, I also, you know, noted that, um, you know, this, this section of Route nine G is a very wide right-of-way. It's actually from the, we'll just call this the south side and the north side. It's ninety-two feet wide, um, which is significantly, typically, our, our roads are fifty-foot wide right-of-way. So it's, uh, New York State DOT has, has taken, uh, you know, land along both sides of nine G just for maintenance. So that really pushes, pushes the, uh, to go additional twenty feet from, from that right-of-way line really restricts visibility of the sign. In addition to a request from the, um, previous, you know, initial meeting with this board, I provided, uh, a, uh, a summary of signage that, um, that, a, a survey that my office did along, uh, Route nine G and Route nine, actually, it was, we spoke about it, it was associated with the Ruby's project. You know, another item for your consideration this evening. And, um, through that survey, uh, we found that ninety-seven percent of the signs along Route nine and Route nine G do not meet the setback, um, for the twenty-foot setback as, as specified in the sign, along with some other, you know, dimensional, uh, sizes for the signs also. So that's been submitted as, uh, supporting information for this application. And in addition to that, um, this sign, Dave had this sign, uh, prepared on vinyl from, um, Planet Signs. And I, it was installed and I provided this board photographs of the sign from very, you know, from locations. I, I noted the photographic locations, uh, showing the location of the sign. And that's, that is, that sign was built, it was built to scale. That's the, that's the size of the sign.
Have you seen the, from the planning board to us?
So, uh, at the.
It looks like it's a little snippy and it looks like they, uh, are annoyed about what we're previously in, uh, twenty twenty-one. So I, I don't know if it's true that we need to.
Sure, so I was actually at the planning board meeting because, uh, so I made application for sign commitment to the planning board. So, uh, truthfully, they were in opposition to the, uh, you know, the request for, like, the, um, setback for this proposed sign. They were not in favor of it. Uh, but what was also brought up, which was part of this original application, was, uh, the location of. Hard to see in there. Uh, right there, billboards. There are billboards located there. And so it's part of the, um, and I actually had a, a discussion with Kim about it because Kim was involved with the original approval of, uh, Dave's Tree and the entire site plan and also the signage with regard to the, of the billboards that exist on the property. And they were a part of a, Kim?
Yeah, um, I'll, I'll send this to the board, this memo that I did. Um, so, so in the town of Rhinebeck, billboards, you can't install a billboard now. But when, I think it was like in the fifties or something, their billboards were actually part of what was called a beautification of New York. And so when, if they were built within a certain time period that they're already kind of standing there, you, the town, even if they have current regulations that don't allow, they're kind of grandfathered in and they can't be part of like a sunset or a, it can't just be automatically removed. They kind of have to kind of stay there until, I guess, they're either voluntarily removed or their lease is up. I, I have to look a little bit further in, but anyway, we looked into it. If, I think the question was, could a board require the billboards be removed because they're not in conformity with the zoning law? And based on the Beautification of New York Act, they can't be required to be taken down. But I'll double check the language, but something to that effect.
Was it agreed back in twenty twenty-one that that would be?
Well, so, so there's, so there's currently a lease in place for those billboards. And so when Dave purchased the property, there was a lease in place and it's still in place. And so, um, when the, you know, he agreed to go speak to the planning board and the leases did, and have a discussion with the planning board. So that, and that was in twenty twenty-one.
And how long is the lease?
Uh, I think it's for another three or four years.
Okay.
I'll, I'll confirm exactly what the beautification of New York requires and what it allows and what it doesn't allow or what it can permit or doesn't permit.
Wait, we usually don't get letters with this kind of tone, you know, planning board. So that's kind of piqued my interest as to what happened with the tax.
Yeah, it's, I mean, it was, the, the site plan was approved and then the, the sign was also approved. You know, the, the individual sign was approved, but not.
Well, that's what they're saying. So I, um, because it referenced, I did ask Gretchen for the old one. This was the old, um, the old drawing set, which doesn't really have, I don't think this sign is there. But if you look on page two mark of the old one, so this was the original proposed sign.
So there were two, there were, no, so there was this application, so this was twenty twenty-one.
Right, which is what the approvals were, right?
Well, no, then we went back and got approval for the sign that you're seeing now in twenty twenty-two.
Oh.
And I have from, I have, uh, from the planning board, this is dated August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two.
Oh, because their referral, I think, referred to twenty twenty-one.
So this is.
You have the, yeah, if you could submit what their, uh, nice. This is the DA, this is a.
Mark, was the, uh, original approval approved sign in the same location and approximately the same size as what's being proposed here?
It's, it's, what's being proposed is exactly what was, so in twenty twenty-one, there was a different sign. Came back in twenty twenty-two with the sign that you've seen now. That was, that was approved.
The exact sign?
Exact sign.
So we're just talking about location, did they make any?
All we're talking about is location, that's it.
And did they have any comment, uh, back then, in twenty twenty-two about location?
Well, twenty twenty-two, it says that the, this was, I guess, the zoning, it was not from the DVA referred, it was from the zoning administrator. Um, so when you submit a sign permit, if it doesn't need a variance, it goes to the planning board for advisory recommendations. And it says here that the requested sign does not raise planning or environmental concerns.
So I went to the planning board for that, for that sign and that sign was acceptable, right? And so then it didn't, so the, the permit wasn't, it's, right, so then it goes to the ZA, it goes to zoning administrator.
To get the sign permit.
To get the actual sign permit. They didn't continue through with the sign, right? He, you know, he didn't, he didn't follow through, but, but what we did get approval for. So, um, so here, I, I mean, I assumed it was the issue of the setback because also in that, in that memo.
It's about DOT.
DOT, which, I mean, um, we've done a lot of work with DOT lately, and especially with Ruby's. And so New York State DOT does not allow any signage in the right-of-way, period. And so we're outside of their right-of-way. Uh, it's on, it's on Dave Hughes' property. It's not in DOT right-of-way. So I see no reason to, for DOT to be involved because it's not, it's not in, in the DOT right-of-way. And actually, um, DOT actually will not allow any sign. They, they used to, um, it, you, you could get a license from DOT to have a sign in the right-of-way. They no longer do that. You can ask Scott, Scott Hutchins.
No, I remember this with the original of Ruby's, um, location way back when, a year or two ago, whatever. It was believed that we, it could be into the right-of-way and then they got, changed their policies.
Right, even, even though they had, the existing stamp signs were in there. And Scott got updated their leases, right? Then, then they said, no, no signs in the right-of-way. So, okay, how big is this sign? Just general.
It's, uh, six square feet on both sides, so it's a total of twelve square feet.
Distance is five, a little more than five feet long. So what I'm hearing, correctly, I mean, we're talking about putting a sign somewhere, or generally speaking, where ninety-five percent of the signage is non-compliant already. So the only precedent really is not compliance.
Yeah, it's ninety-seven percent, actually.
I'm sorry, excuse me.
If you want to be precise.
That's why you're here.
Now, we've, we've seen this story before. I mean, it's, it's.
It's put aside.
Just the only reason I raise, you know, when I, our sister group or whoever.
Right.
Our planning board sent a letter with this tone and demands that we ask you some questions.
The current, the current referral to this application references the twenty twenty-one plan. So that's interesting that there were the twenty twenty-two.
I went back.
Yeah.
And, and the, the, the sign design was acceptable to the planning board at that, at that time in twenty twenty-two. You know, it's the same, it's the same.
I mean, I guess what they're saying is that in twenty twenty-one, the sign wasn't approved, which is correct. It was, um, but then I guess you submitted a sign permit in twenty twenty-two, so.
I think, I actually checked, I think I did two. I did one for the sign that was shown on the approved plan. Well, actually, I think we, because that's not, the sign on the approved, on the approved plan set met the criteria. The only thing that we had to do is file, you know, file, uh, you know, or get a referral from the planning board to go to the zoning administrator for that. But then Dave changed his mind on the type of signing line and went back in twenty twenty-two, met with the planning board for, uh, you know, for their referral to the zoning administrator.
And, and the sign in twenty twenty-two was outs, was in the, uh, outside the, it was further back?
It was twenty feet.
Okay. And, and you said, so why, it just, you said visibility? And, and you said, so why, it just, you said visibility was the issue?
Yeah, and so he didn't really look at it that well, at, you know, at 20 feet, I showed it that 20 feet and then went out and staked it and he said, you know, wanted to move closer.
What's on some of the recommendations here? It, to me, it doesn't sound right. It seems like we should be moving forward and especially if we've been prior approval in 2022, I'd like to see that.
Yeah, well, it would be a sign permit. Yeah, concealing, we're getting, the planning board has conflicting information because it doesn't even mention the 2022 one.
Right, we need to get to the bottom of that and.
But they should have reviewed these plans, which show what the new sign looks like. So it's, it is a little confusing. My recommendation, I think it, maybe I'll contact Melanie and Jim Levy from the planning board chair and then the planning consultancy, just mention about, could you, would you mind submitting that, the 2022 one to Gretchen?
Sure.
For the, for the record and I'll, I'll kind of talk about it and kind of see if I can get some clarity on it.
Procedurally.
My recommendation.
Do either close or to continue?
I would continue and if, if I can get a little bit more clarity from the planning board that, you know, maybe they'll say, oh, our mistake, we, yeah, the 2022 sign is mine. You know, I can, we can start, we can start, or I think we can maybe start our deliberations, get an idea, and if something kind of comes back from the planning board that requires more discussion.
And if we continue it until February, it doesn't mean that we can't close in February and have a resolution ready that night, not delaying, assuming we get answers.
Yeah, and then I can also, I'll look a little bit further of, into the billboard question too. So, yeah, my recommendation, let's keep the public hearing open. You guys, if you feel comfortable, can start your deliberations. So I can have a draft resolution ready and then at the next meeting, I can provide you with more information if you need to have more discussions, we can, but, you know, we'll go forward where I'll, I'll have a resolution in draft prepared and then if we need more discussions, we can figure that out.
Everybody all right with that, right?
Yeah.
So I make a motion that, any questions concerning Mark? I make a motion that, you know, we continue the public hearing until February 21st, I think it is, 2024. Do I have a second?
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. So we'll continue the public hearing until the 21st. We'll hopefully have answers by the, by the resolution, so you're not losing any time. And it gives us some wiggle room too.
Yeah, and if, if there's a problem, we'll discuss it at the next meeting and we'll figure it out.
I think the problem is the billboards, you know, that's the problem.
Yeah, I'll.
The problem is what?
The billboards, the billboards.
Yeah, but if he has a lease and the lease is still good, there's not much that they can be compelled, you know, you can't, you can't get a lease on a credit that you're filing.
Okay.
And maybe if you can get some information, that might be helpful too, is to get some information on leases when they expire.
Sure, I will.
And then maybe if we got a commitment to not renew them and have them taken down or something, whatever, at the end of the lease term, that might be helpful as well.
Okay.
Play a key for the board.
And going with the right of way, with, remember we had the Bell application that was one with the fence that was kind of close, the taller fence that was right next to?
Yes, 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 yes.
Now, there was a question that was raised about the, I don't know if it was in the right of way or outside the right of way, but remember, we did ask them to kind of reach out.
Yeah, you know, that's there or that one. DOT didn't want anything to do with it.
No, it's, they're just. Is it, would it be okay, could you get a quick reaction from, I know that was the problem with Bell, was that they didn't think it could be a quick turnaround.
I'll try.
Yeah, if you could try, just to, just to make sure that we just, we want to make sure that, you know, we.
You, so what, like, what exactly?
Just to say, just ask if DOT has a problem with it if it's outside the right of way.
Right, okay.
You know, you can say it's seven feet outside the right of way, provide their, the plans.
Sure.
I know, I know that that was the concern, was that you might not get a response, but if you could try to get that.
Sure, I will, I'll do that, yeah.
Thank you.
I can't imagine them caring.
They probably don't, but I, I do remember we did.
It's not about either of us.
We did, I think we did ask that of Bell, I can't remember if Bell was in the right of way or close to it.
They're not, I don't think they were in the right of way, but.
But we did ask for that, because I think it was a, it was a question. Yeah, outside there.
We'll reach out to you too.
Thank you.
All right, great, thanks.
Okay, so would you guys like to express any opinions on it as it stands right now?
I think it's fine.
I think it's fine.
It's a little bit fine, the, the sign is fine and the placement makes sense. And I was a little surprised by the response we got from the planning board. I'm fine with it. Rest again?
Yeah. Trying to make a resolution out of that. But, but we, we had a lot of discussion. Yeah, we had a lot of discussion with Ruby.
Were you taken back by the tone of the?
I, no, but. I, I thought the tone for Ruby people a little bit more. Oh, and just, so Dutchess County Planning Board, big tones, they did, they had no issues, not of a little concern, so no, no problem with the sign.
So, in the affirmative.
Oh, well, sorry, one more question. Mark, you had mentioned about the inventory that you had done for Ruby, would you mind just submitting that sheet or that summary?
He did, I do.
You did, okay.
Yeah, I had it officially.
But if, yeah, as long as you submit it for.
Changed the name, too.
Okay.
Goddamn, you have to do that kind of thing.
That's awesome. All right, great. So the next one is, this is great, come on up.
Hopefully it's not as exciting as, so we can go around and tell.
All righty, so basically, I know you went for the application with us, you accepted it. So if you could just go through what you want to do and I think you've got some additional information.
Yeah, and if you could open the public hearing.
Yes, and make motion that we open the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. All right.
So, yeah, so what I'm going for is a, two variances, right? Roof coverage areas and, and so.
Square footage, yeah.
Building, this will be the fourth one. So that's, those are the variances that we're going for. So that's my home. This is a view from Rhineberg Road. That is not the variance you're going for, that's already shown here. I'm going for a porch, unenclosed porch behind the house, which you could see from, it would be right there and I think we sit in the Rhineberg Road.
Right, right there.
Right there, sure. That's it.
Anybody here?
No door, no water, by the way.
So just ask if anybody in the audience here, but I didn't think so, but I always like to ask.
So, so it will probably, it probably won't be visible here, right? Because it looks like the barn probably.
Yeah, you might get a view right there, yeah.
And then maybe you'll.
Right there, yeah, it'll be right there. But you'll see through it too, right? Because it's, it's under the walls, it's just a shed roof.
And it's right next to another small building?
Yes.
What is that other building?
That's a, like a, it's sort of like a poolhouse studio. My wife teaches Pilates.
Yeah, so they look similar, I mean.
Yeah, they are, we tried to use a similar geometry, so they have some symmetry together. We use a natural wood, we use the CLT panels, very green, so.
And we did get a response from the planning board?
Yes.
Nice, benign.
Yes, they, they said no.
Civil.
No, no concerns. Just a one page.
The usual response.
And so both of these structures will be on, on the property?
Yes, this one's, this one in the pool is already approved.
Right.
And are these take down?
Yeah, this, this one, there's a, there's actually a floor there.
So when we go out?
Oh, you'll see it.
We'll see it, okay.
Yes.
I assume we should contact you about going out?
You just show up if you like, or contact.
Well, you try to be, you know.
Yeah.
We have manners here, so, you know.
Yeah, yes, contact.
Yeah, so, but we'll give you a call. Weekend's okay?
Anytime.
Okay. Some of us are still working.
I know. And what's that, what will it be used for?
This is gonna be, there'll be like maybe a table under there for eating, you know, under the sun, just to get out of the shade.
It's like a pavilion, it's a, a shade, it's a, yeah.
It's a shape of it, my pool, there's a pool right here.
Uh huh, I see, yeah.
That's pretty cool too, that was a steel pool cargo container modular.
Oh, it was?
Yeah, it was, I think I got off mom and I could chew it that way though. And being in the steel business and knowing rigging and owning cranes and all this, and I thought it would be very easy, very exciting, it was a nightmare. But it's all good, it's good. Camp, camp the young for my grandson.
Any questions? All right, so a couple of us, we traipse around out there, but we will call first and meet you, so. Any, no questions, concerns, anything? All right, so I, I think we can close the public hearing. Does anybody have a?
Yeah.
All right, I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing. Do I have a second?
Second.
All in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and what that means is we close the public hearing, so we have 62 days to render a resolution. However, I'm confident that we will have a resolution available by February 21st. And you don't have to be here unless you have nothing better to do on a Wednesday evening. You're more than welcome to listen to the resolution, so we'll have it by, by the next meeting.
Okay, great.
And, and we'll, we'll be out there, we'll check it out.
Okay, yeah, and I can go to planning on the 20 something, 20? So I'll change that sign for the planning notices, send all the notices out for the planning board, I guess, yeah? Okay, cool, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. Thank you.
Do you guys want to have any discussions about what you think about this?
Unless I see something really different when I go out there, it seems probably definitely take rest again.
Well, just, also, just quick, I own the property behind it and around it.
And you're not objecting to it, so, I'm kidding.
No, 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 if I do myself a variance, I'm gonna go to the side of the back, but couldn't even, I had to keep it 30 feet or 45 feet off my own property line, so, great.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, the next one is, is somebody here for that? Come on up. So, you've seen how this happens, you know, we just named, give us the application, you know, you take us through it.
What's your name? Peter Visser. I was here last time for the application of the, to build the apartment off of the bar, existing bar. And I was just curious because it provides more renderings, which I dropped off, and additionally, more pictures of the building sitting by itself, which I did.
Thank you.
I hope they're satisfactory this time.
That helps.
Well, we had only this one before and then we added, I asked them to do the, the, to be used.
No, I appreciate it, it just makes it a lot easier for us to have an idea of, of what's going to look like when it's done and, and that's part of the consideration to go through, you know, it's a good point, the neighborhood, et cetera, you know.
Yeah, I don't doubt why anybody will see it because of the sight of where it is in the building. And how high it sits off of 9G. So it's like, you, you know, driving, you won't see it.
Now, is this staked out as well? That means.
I, I can just put something there, like tomorrow or something.
Yeah.
I haven't been there, so it's probably snow up, I don't know.
Well, if you could say.
It's not here every day.
If you could stake it out, that, that, that helps us, that gives us a good idea of how big it is and how, how it sits on the property.
Yeah, I'll put something, caution tape, like, delineating it, and that's fine.
Right, just so you have an idea of what, how it's gonna sit and how big it's gonna be and, and the rest of it. Because we will go out, we'll have some folks go out, who's Joe, I think?
Do you know when or have you guys scheduled it and?
Well, we'll call you.
Okay.
Yeah, I guess I'd be on the air, so we'd like to call you up again and say, hey, can we come out? Get you, and then we can go out and can take us out there and show.
Make sure the driveway's plowed and, as I said, and stuff.
Although we've, we've trudged through snow before, so if we can do that again, that's not a problem.
Well, there's a place to park, I don't know how many cars are coming, but like, at least get off of 9G.
Yeah, there'll be a couple of us probably, I don't, I don't think everybody, so. Anyway, anybody have any questions, concerns? The renderings do help.
Good.
And Scott, before you open it to the public, if you could just open the public hearing?
I thought I did.
I don't think you did, did you? Not for this one?
No, okay. Make a motion that we open the public hearing. Second? Okay, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
And then gonna ask if anyone's here for the public?
I don't know, okay. Anybody here for the public hearing?
I'm here in support of Pete.
Okay, well, what?
I'm a local neighbor.
Okay.
And.
Well, why don't you do this, if, you could come on up, give us your name, where you live, and tell us what you think about the project.
Scott Martin, my resident Seven Market Drive, so a local neighbor. I'm all for it, you know, give guys, let's hang sack, go to work every day, pay their taxes, so if you think you have a place to sleep, you know? The property now, keeps it well maintained, you know, plenty, doesn't look like a mess, so I just came to do a full support for them.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you. You good? You ready about reviewing it?
Yeah.
Anything? Any concerns or any questions or, okay. All right, I think I'll make a motion that we close the public hearing.
Sure.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. And what that means is we have 62 days to render a resolution. Resolution should be done by February 21st. Easy for me to say, Kim writes them, so, but anyway.
You're prepared now?
Yes, well, we were due. We will be out there, a couple of us, Joe, I'm sure, since he's, you know, the person on it. So we'll contact you and go out there and take a look at it. So if you could have a taped off or taped off or to show us where the, you know, additions are gonna be, that would be great, very helpful. So, but you don't, you don't have to be here on the 21st, but we should have a resolution on that date, and if you want to come here.
So how do I know when the reserve?
Gretchen will let you know, I believe.
You'll get a copy of the resolution, Scott.
Okay. So there's no need to, to come?
There is no need to come.
Okay.
We won't be hurt if you don't show up.
Is that it?
Is it?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Well, good evening.
Um, I don't know, most people say.
Because if you're doing, you know, so, you know, if you're gonna, you know, schedule for it.
No, I mean, I agree. Okay, if you, but you, you want to have a private follow-up, you know, some of these other folks who are retired people, you know? All right.
Do you guys have any, anything to add at this moment about, what do you think about it?
I, I think it looks fine, I don't have a problem. But again, we haven't done the site. I would, I would do it in the afternoon, but this one, because there are, it's more susceptible than the last one.
Okay, after your site visit, you guys.
Something, something to change, yeah.
Yeah.
But based upon what we have so far in the renderings, it looks okay.
Yeah, like I said, if you could just, after your, after the site visit, if you guys want to talk with Joe, Joe can send me an email just about what your thoughts are, then I can incorporate that.
So Joe, if you're gonna coordinate it, keep everybody moved as far as the post date, right, and get out there, bring it, and rest again. So Joe, if you're gonna coordinate it, keep everybody involved as far as the proposed date, and I can get out there, bring in the rest of the gang. And actually, that's probably not a bad one for most of us to go to, because there's, you know, there's a.
Yeah, you might be able to.
It's a, it's a bigger addition than yesterday, the last one.
Yeah, planning board didn't write that he comes in.
No. Alright, and then we have the Williams case, have we, still haven't received additional numbers. So do you want me to make a motion to open it and then continue it?
Uh, yeah, you can just, you can make a motion to continue it.
Okay, so I, since we haven't gotten the numbers yet from Mr. Williams, I make a motion to continue the public hearing, do I have a second?
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
And last is old business, which is Rookies, we have a resolution.
Yes.
Was that the person on this?
Yep.
That was. It was actually Tim, it was Tim, I don't believe him, but he is not coming out of retirement, so apparently I'll read it.
It wasn't exciting enough, man.
Yes, alright, so. Has everybody had an opportunity to total it, because I'll read through it, but, yeah, okay. Alright, so this is a resolution of the town of Ryanbeck zoning vote appeals in the matter of area variance application of Rookies ninety G Properties LLC, ZBA case number ten twenty-eight. Background applicant, the applicant is Rookies ninety G Properties LLC, hereafter referred to as applicant. The applicant is represented before this board by Mark Kraminsky and Seth Steckel of the firm of Mark R. Kraminsky. Property involved, the appeal involves property located at three seven one eight Route ninety G in the town of Ryanbeck, and which bears the tax parcel number one three five oh eight nine dash six one seven one dash zero zero dash eight six oh seven zero zero, the property. Applicant's property is approximately one hundred and thirty-one point six two acres in area and is located in the ORP zoning district. Description of proposed project, the applicant proposes to destruct new signs on the property. The property formerly housed a re-defactory facility known as the stamp property. Following a zoning amendment to the town zoning law, the property proposes to be utilized as a repair and service establishment for Rookies car dealership company, Rookies Subaru, Rookies Chrysler Dodge Jeep Ram, and Rookies Ford. Only service and repairs will be conducted on the site, and no car sales will take place on this property. As part of this project, new signs will be used for the chain of business, and all the existing signs from the stamp property, which include two billboard signs, one Highland slash monument sign, one building slash wall mounted sign and directional sign, will be removed. The new signs for Rookies will include the following, one monument slash freestanding sign, four building slash wall mounted signs, and the internal direction signs. For area variances required, the applicant does not meet several requirements under section one twenty-five dash thirty-seven of the town of Ryanbeck zoning law sign regulations. As well as a requirement under section one twenty-five dash fifty-six of the town of Ryanbeck zoning law lighting regulations. The applicant seeks or requires six area variances from these regulations. Area variance one pursuant to one twenty-five dash thirty-seven K two A, not more than two primary, primary signs shall be permitted per establishment on the lot. Such signs shall consist of one freestanding identity sign and or one identity wall sign located on the establishment's principal facade. Here, the applicant proposes to have one primary freestanding sign and four identity wall signs. Thus, the applicant requires an area variance for the three additional identity wall signs proposed. Area variance two, additionally pursuant to one twenty-five dash thirty-seven K two A, such signs shall consist of one freestanding identity sign not to exceed twelve square, square feet in surface area, and or one identity wall sign located on the establishment's principal facade not to exceed one square foot for six linear six feet of building frontage. The maximum total signs per establishment shall be determined by the book formula and shall not exceed thirty square feet for the lot. Here, the applicants, applicant's proposed sign exceed the maximum square footage permitted, the freestanding sign is proposed to be one hundred and thirteen point seven six square feet, and the identity wall signs total forty-seven point zero seven square feet. In total, the applicant proposes one hundred and sixty point eighty-three square feet, thus the applicant requires an area variance of one hundred and thirty point eighty-three square feet for the proposed signage. Area variance three pursuant to one twenty-five dash thirty-seven K two C, individual internal direction signs shall be no more than two square feet on each of two sides. Here, the applicant proposes fourteen directional signs, of the fourteen directional signs, ten exceed the permitted two square feet per sign. These signs are as follows, a stop sign times two, which measures four square feet each. Subaru directional service customers and or delivery vendors, which measures six square feet. Subaru directional dash parking, customer parking, which measures thirty, excuse me, three point nine five seven five square feet. Subaru directional service entrance, which measures three point nine five seventy-five square feet. A do not enter sign times four, which measures two point two square feet each, and exit sign, which measures two point two five square feet. An area variance of thirteen point one seven square feet in total is required for these signs. Four pursuant, this is area variance four pursuant to one twenty-five thirty-seven K three, freestanding sign shall not exceed six feet in height. Here, the applicant's proposed freestanding sign will be ten feet six inches in height, thus an area variance is required for four feet six inches. Area variance five, additionally pursuant to one twenty-five dash thirty-seven K three, freestanding sign shall not be located closer than twenty feet to any property line. Here, the applicant's proposed freestanding sign will be located one foot away from the property line, thus the applicant requires an area variance for nineteen feet. And then finally, area variance six pursuant to one twenty-five dash fifty-six F seven, the maximum allowable height of a building or structure mounted luminaire shall be fifteen feet. Here, the applicant's proposed boost neck fixtures on the freestanding sign, which will, here, the applicant, the applicant's proposed boost neck fixtures on the freestanding sign. Should we take that which?
Which?
Yeah, take that which. Will be at a height of eighteen feet two inches, thus an area variance is required for three feet two inches for the light fixtures. ZBA review timeliness of appeal, the applicant filed an appeal with this board on May twenty-third, twenty twenty-two, following a minor change made from previously approved site plan, special use and wetlands permit granted by the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board on October eighteenth, twenty twenty-one. The applicant has paid the requisite fee, the appeal was filed within sixty days of the date of the ZBO's determination. Appeal from dated May eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, and thus the application is timely as required under one twenty-five dash one twenty-five B of the town of Ryanbeck zoning law. The application was deemed complete and accepted by this board on June fifteenth, twenty twenty-two. Secret, the application is signed obtained in front of the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board on June sixth, twenty twenty-two, the planning board classified this applicant application as a type two action under the New York State Environmental Quality Review Act, secret. And the ZBA accepts the planning board's classification of this project as a type two, and no further environmental review is required for this application. Referring in response, the application was referred to the Dutchess County Planning Department pursuant to general municipal law section two thirty-nine M on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and again on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Following revisions from the applicant on the proposed signage, the Dutchess County Planning Department responded on July fifteenth, twenty twenty-two, and noted some concerns. The Dutchess County Planning Department stated that the proposed monument sign is much larger in both sign area and height than what is necessary to communicate this business to the public. Dutchess County Planning Department also noted that the sign's proposed location, approximately seventy-five feet north of the driveway and elevated ten feet of upgrade, puts the sign out of the standard sightline of drivers passing by, which may account for why the sign is proposed to be so large compared to what is permitted. Dutchess County Planning Department suggested that the application should consider a different location for the sign, closer to gray and more visible to drivers, to, you know, to drivers. Such as on the south, southern side of the access drive. Dutchess County Planning Department also noted duplicate texts that could be removed to reduce the sign area. On December fifteenth, twenty twenty-three, Dutchess County Planning Department, having received revised plans from the applicant, provided similar comments noting that the proposed sign and height of the monument sign were excessive. And again noted that the location of the sign now positioned fifty feet north of the driveway still deviates from driver's optimal sightline. Dutchess County Planning Department suggested a wider lower sign with a decorative base and landscaping. Ultimately, Dutchess County Planning Department recommended denial. Of the requested variance, height variance for the freestanding sign, and that we should condition the area variance for the monument sign upon its relocation from the embankment of the roadway and reduction of its size. With this recommendation of denial for the height varies of the freestanding sign, the ZBA may act contrary to such recommendation upon a vote of a majority plus one of its members. Dutchess County Planning Department did not provide any comments as to the building, mounted sign or directional sign, as those would not be visible from Route ninety G and therefore a matter of mortal concern. The applicant also referred the, also referred to the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board pursuant to town of Ryanbeck zoning law one twenty-five dash one twenty-five B of June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and again on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Following revisions from the applicant on the proposed signage, the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board responded on July nineteenth, twenty twenty-two, and noted some planning concerns with the entire sign package. The planning board also raised concerns with the large number of variances requested, it raised concern that such a large number effectively indicates the current zoning requirements for sign, for the signage. Although the planning board also noted that the current zoning law is likely inadequate to address such a, such a use in this location. And while suggesting that such sign regulation should be reviewed and amended, the ZBA should consider the application as reviewed under the current zoning regulations. On December eighth, twenty twenty-three, the planning board, having received revised plans from the applicant, provided similar comments and noted they still had concerns about the number of variances requested. They also notes that the current code is likely inadequate to address signage and needs for such a use in this location. The applicant, excuse me, the application was also referred to the town of Ryanbeck Board of Forensic Advisory Committee on WAC on June twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, and again on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three, following revisions from the applicant on the proposed signage. No reports or comments were received from the WAC, as more than thirty days have elapsed since the referral request was submitted, this Ryanbeck ZBA can continue with its review without the response from the WAC. Eight, public hearing, public hearing on this appeal was duly advertised and held at town hall on July twentieth, twenty twenty-two. Due to continued discussions with the applicant and the ZBA regarding possible design changes, the public hearing was continued on August eighteenth, twenty-two, public hearing, public hearing period, during the, August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, during the.
I think the first public hearing should.
Yeah.
So should maybe read, public hearing is continued to the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two meeting. During the August eighteenth, twenty twenty-two, ZBA, I guess I'll just say public hearing.
Yeah, during the public hearing.
Yep.
Yeah, after twenty twenty-two. The applicant discussed further design changes and discussions about whether the sign should be relocated and asked for the public hearing to be adjourned until further discussions with the planning board could be, could take place on the design and location. Public hearing was later re-noticed and held at town hall on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. Here's the course of the public hearing, no comments were received from the public, the public hearing was closed on December twentieth, twenty twenty-three. A site visit in August of twenty twenty-two, the ZBA members visited the applicant's property and the surrounding neighborhood to observe firsthand onsite conditions, property characteristics, setting, general environment, and the character of the surrounding neighborhood. During the visit, the applicant provided a prototype of the proposed monument sign. The ZBA members were allowed to review the topography of the site as well as the location of the proposed sign in relation to the New York State Department of Transportation, Route ninety G. No business or deliberations were conducted during the site, just for the record, I know I was out there, I don't know if you got them beyond there, I know the two of us were out there.
Yeah, I wasn't sure, because, just because the void had changed, I wasn't sure.
Yeah, yeah, but I know that the two of us were out there, so. Anyway, findings of fact and conclusions of law, balancing tests. In our review of the variance sought, we have considered the benefit to the applicant if the area variances are granted. As weight against the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such grant, we determine that the variances requested should be granted, because there is no detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by the granting of these variances. Consideration of the five factor in balance, balancing test. In our determination, we have considered the five factors required by section one twenty-five dash one twenty-four C one of the town of Ryanbeck zoning laws follows. A, if the variances are granted, will they cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood or causing detriment to nearby properties? We find that the answer to this question is no. In visiting the site and having the benefit of seeing the prototype constructed, the location and size of the signs are logical and make sense for the area. We have reviewed the concerns raised by both Dutchess County Planning Department and the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board regarding the number of variances being requested by the applicant, and understand that such a number is large. The ZBA had requested, or had discussed with the applicant if other locations would be more suitable for the sign placement, and if the design could be smaller. However, the location of the property along Route ninety G has cars traveling at fifty-five miles per hour, and the sign needs to be at a height and size that is eligible for drivers as they pass the sign. To have a lower or wider sign would be difficult to read as travelers went by on this roadway, and it could create hazards such customers had to slow down to read the sign or return quickly before they missed the turn. Although the proposed sign is large in comparison to what is permitted, it is actually a reduction in size for what existed for the stamp property for many years. Previously, signage for the stamp property was two hundred and forty-one square feet, the proposed signage for Rookies is two hundred square feet. Additionally, the applicant provided an inventory of the signage along Route nine and ninety G. Level of signage may not be as large as the proposed signage here, it was presented that a substantial majority of the signage along Roots nine and ninety G did not meet the sign regulations, regulations for the town of Ryanbeck. The applicant noted that no freestanding sign surveyed was twelve square feet or less. Approximately eighty percent of the freestanding signs exceed thirty square feet, and ninety-seven percent of the signs were closer than twenty feet from the property lines. Thus, while the proposed change, the proposed signage requires several area variances, such granting will not cause an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, where many existing signs would require area variances if newly proposed. In comparison to what existed previously on the property, the proposed signage is a reduction in area. The applicant did try to relocate the signage in the New York State Department right away, where the stamp signage had previously been located, however, based upon. Correspondence from New York State DOT, such location was not permitted, and the sign had to be relocated on the property. Due to constraints on the property, including topography, wetlands, and the requirement to maintain a twenty-foot buffer under the OPR regulations, the placement of the sign is a logical position, is, the placement of the sign is a logical position. Is it, is in? About, yeah, we'll throw it in. A logical position that offers visibility to customers without creating an undesirable change in the character of the neighborhood, which mainly consists of commercial businesses. The proposed signs are aesthetically pleasing in design and an improvement to the previous industrial site. The proposed lighting will only be on during business hours, anticipated to be between seven AM to seven PM, and will not be on all night. The lighting is sensible and is not disruptive to the neighborhood, particularly to other rental businesses around the area. The internal signs are not visible from Route ninety G and are only visible when entering the site. However, such signs are required for both safety and directional purposes. B, can the benefits sought by the applicant be achieved by some other method feasible for the applicant to pursue other than an area variance? We find that the question, answer to the question is no. As mentioned in the town of Ryanbeck Planning Board's referral comments, the current sign regulations are inadequate to address the signage needs for such a use in this location. The ZBA agrees, particularly with the speeds cars travel on this roadway. The sign must be visible for drivers to safely identify the location they are traveling, and have enough time for safe, to safely enter the property. Sign must be visible to be seen at such speeds, it must be of a certain height and size, which would require an area variance to achieve this. More so, as was demonstrated by the area, excuse me, was demonstrated by the sign, the ones which were presented by the applicant, a vast majority of the signs around the area require area variance. Thus, the applicant would require an area variance for any signage proposed. Thus, the applicant would require an area variance for any signage proposed. Is the requested area, C, is the requested area variance substantial? We find that the answer to this question is yes. The number of area variances requested is large, and some of the area variances substantially exceed the maximum permitted amount. However, that said, the proposed signage is a reduction in the sign area to what currently exists on the property. And I would have added, it isn't entitled, you know, the, the law, because it's just, it's got to be changed. This is, we go through this all the time. I don't know how we can do this, but this is like ridiculous. I can't deal with, anyway.
You want to add something?
I want this to change because this is just like, you know, when we were doing silliness with the number of accessory structures.
Yeah.
This is ridiculous, and, and every single, we've gotten so many applications, which were ridiculous because the law is lousy. And I don't know if we put it in here, because the, the planning board has mentioned, you know, they're, they delicately second. I'm saying it less delicately. The law has to be changed. It's just totally.
I mean, this, this probably won't change the law, but it puts it on the record, and then, you know, we can talk about how to get it on there.
We, we should, the town board or somebody.
Yeah, the town board would be the, be the one to change it.
Correct.
But what, what would you like to say?
Just make some reference to that, you know, it's, it's not, the reason that this is, you know, seems so excessive that, that they need so many is, is because of the deficiencies in the law, not, I don't know how you phrase it, but the law is deficient, and we should make a note of that, that part of the reason there is such a need for variances is because there are so many, because the law is so poor. You can fill the record of that.
Yeah. Let me just. I was just going to say, but the current zoning law does not adequately address the need for signs in this area. Although the ZBA, I'll say, although we must, by, by the current zoning law, we are in support to have the zoning law.
The law is not. I would say we would urge that the, you know, urge that the town board.
The town board.
Consider amendments to this area of the zoning law. Because, you know, it's a non legal problem. It's ridiculous.
Do you want to say we're not going to abide by the current law?
Well, we, we're giving variance, we're, we're, giving the variance, correct.
Well, yeah, so we must consider. So we might, we must consider the current zoning law. We would urge the town board, consider amendments to the zoning law to.
You know, alleviate the deficiencies in the law.
Laws have best of the help.
Well, that's true. Or the flaws in the law. I'll leave the flaws in the law, or? Okay, I mean, I just, that's better. Sign regulations.
The ZBA maybe continually has to address these.
Yeah, it has had to, and, yeah.
Are we trying to figure out how it could be simplified?
No, it's got to be amended so that people don't have to come before us to get reasonable signs in these areas.
It's really.
The size requirements are just ridiculous and so small for it, it's.
It's for any road that's above a certain speed limit.
Sure, and, and you have, you're in a commercial area, it's just.
Oh, but, but then I just said, the ZBA continually has to address area variances based on, based on sign size, and it is apparent that such regulations are inadequate for similar areas.
Yeah, it's not just size too, it's, it's, the placement of them.
Size and placement.
Size and location.
Yes, size and location.
Or any placement of.
And number, number of signs for, yeah, there's, there's, the whole thing has to be, well, anyway, we're not going to solve it here, right?
No, but it's, it's on the record now.
It's on the record.
And it also just provides, because, you know, there's a saying with the Department of State that, you know, when someone has to repeatedly ask for an area variance for the same thing, it's indicating that something's not working for the current, for the current situation.
And, and it's not right for the applicants, who shouldn't have to go through this process, and it's annoying to us. So, anyway, shall I continue?
Please.
All right. Will the proposed area variance have an adverse impact on physical or environmental conditions in the neighborhood or district? We find the answer to this question is no. The proposed signage added to the building will not create any physical disturbance to the property or impact any environmental conditions in the neighborhood. The installation of the freestanding sign will not require much disturbance. The freestanding sign being placed closer to the property line avoids additional trees being cut within the buffer maintained by the OPR zoning district. Is the alleged difficulty self-created? We find the answer to this question is yes. The applicant requires many signs for this location, and the signs, while designated to be reasonable, while designed to be reasonable and visible to passing drivers, are large in their design. The applicant could attempt to minimize the signs, but reducing the size may reduce their visibility and create hazards if they are too small or illegible for passing drivers. Minimal variances requested. In addition to our review of the five factors in balancing test, we must also determine if this requested, requested, if these, how about, should we have you, Coro?
Yeah.
If these requested variances are, are the minimal, the minimum variances necessary to adequately accomplish what is requested by the applicant, something along those lines. We find the answer to this question is yes. Although the variances requested are numerous, both in number and scale, the applicant has demonstrated the need for all these signs to provide leisure, safety, and entry in the property for Route ninety G. Thus, the need for the size and location of the freestanding sign, and also navigating the interior of the property so the customers can know where to park, how to enter and leave the premises, and where they can travel within the area. Although numerous, the signs are logical for the design and layout of the proposed use of the property. Now, therefore, be it resolved based upon all the facts described above and upon the reasoning described above as follows. Section one, the ZBA hereby grants the variances from zoning law section one twenty five dash thirty seven K two A, one twenty five thirty seven K two C, one twenty five dash thirty seven K three, and one twenty five dash fifty six F seven requested by the applicant, finding that the benefit to the applicant outweighs the detriment to the health, safety, and welfare of the neighborhood or community by such a grant. The applicant's proposed signs are a reduction in the total signage area from the previous use of the property, but also maintain necessary visibility to passing drivers and customers, period. With the exception of the freestanding sign, many of the other signs will not be visible from Route ninety G, but are necessary for the safety, are necessary for, for safety purposes for navigating the flow of traffic and customers within the property. The applicant has demonstrated that many signs are not in conformity with the current sign regulations in this vicinity, and thus the area variance is granted for this proposed use is not a detriment to the surrounding neighborhood. Two, the granting of these variances is expressly contingent upon the design and placement of the sign, of the signs? Yeah, being in conformity with the plans submitted by the ZBA. Three, the granting of the variances shall also expressly be contingent upon the applicant's full payment to the Town of Ryanbeck for any and all fees and escrow deposits due in connection with this application, and full compliance with Article fourteen, fee reimbursement of the Town of Ryanbeck zoning law. These variances shall not be deemed granted until all such fees are paid in full by the applicant. For the granting of these variances does not absolve the applicant from having to secure any other required permits and/or approvals. The proposed structures?
No.
Signs? Must be constructed in conformity with the application and plans submitted, and finally, the area variances shall be null and void unless the proposed construction is committed within one year of this resolution. All right. Comments? Concerns?
I have one change of correction. I noticed I put freestyle instead of freestanding.
Okay.
And then Mark has a comment. He'd like to.
Page six, if the buffer is two hundred feet, that's fine.
Oh, the buffer, oh, okay.
Page six, eight.
Yeah, yeah, let me just change this for one. And page six?
Page six.
I mean, it's five hundred. So two hundred.
It's two hundred.
Any other?
Anyway, I think you did a nice job here, and I'm glad you put up with me.
No, it's, it's like, like you said.
It's annoying.
But you know, the thing is, like I said, like, like you said with the generators and stuff, you know, when it kind of becomes that every single sign has required area variances, it usually requires, it's an indication that something needs to be looked at.
And even, even with like, say, for example, pork meat, that's in excess of, we need to give various for that, and it's still not big enough. I mean, pork meat, and Tim Econoply did a great job on that, but, you know, there's, it should be bigger.
I like the pork meat side myself, but.
I like it. He did a great job on that, but it should be bigger. I mean, and that's forty five. So, I mean, the law is just inadequate. Trying to be delicate, but, I mean, it, it, so hopefully something will be done.
I, I'm going to call Jim Levy on the Dave's Tree Service, and I believe Jim is working with the zoning review commission, so I'll talk to him about the process and what, what he considers.
And I remember the process for the area variances, because I was kind of involved with that, but, you know, it was a while ago, but, you know, there was a committee and a review process, and then it, it went to the town board, and there was comment there, and then ultimately they changed the law, so.
Yeah, I, I know that there's a few things that are being looked at.
This has to really be changed. This is just ridiculous, so.
I mean, there must be some, maybe about national standards or something, but Jim would know about some recommendations.
Yeah, I'm sure that there, a lot of, a lot of zoning, zoning laws have a lot of, and a lot of the regulations for signs are, are pretty thorough, just like this. I mean, I will say the Ryanbeck zoning law is very, you know, heavy on the signs, but, you know, maybe, maybe instead of basing it on zone, basing it on speed limits or something like that, I don't, I don't have a suggestion, but I'll, I'll ask Jim what he suggests.
It's silly, it's inadequate, and it's dangerous, in my opinion, the way, the way it is for this particular quarter. So, but anyway, that's just my, anybody else want to pontificate? Can anything off the chain?
Scott.
Oh, thank you.
Same here.
Same, okay. Any comments, concerns, whatever?
I'm in favor of Scott.
In favor of Scott.
You're supposed to be, are you in favor of the resolution, but we'll, okay. Well, we've had your comments, so I just imagine that we adopt the resolution as read with changes and corrections. Do I have a second?
Second.
Okay. Gretchen?
Scott.
Yes.
Catherine.
Yes.
Richard.
Yes.
Joe.
Yes.
Brian.
Yes.
All right, gang, that is it, I believe, for the agenda. Kim, do we have anything else?
I don't think so. I'll, I'll get in touch with.
We really, you really need to have this pressed.
Yeah, and I'll get in touch with Jim and Melanie about Dave's Tree Service, see if I can get more information. I'll send you more information about the beautification, and we'll.
Okay, would you two adjourn? On paper, I, yes, post day. All right, thank you very much. Steve, another great job. Thank you.